I certainly hope that you would enjoy the session today with the, as we conduct the city business. I'd like to also ask at this time, the Reverend Mark Davenport will come from City Light Church with our invocation, and then we will ask you all to stand along with him, and we're going to have the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Let us stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, who sweetens every relationship we have, Lord, we pray that you be present now in these meetings. Lord, we ask for you to give us the mind of Christ, that we know and do what will be pleasing before you and impact this community for good. Lord, I pray that as these young people are here today, that we see ourselves and this council sees themselves as more than just making decisions, but making decisions that will influence and impact a generation to come. Lord, let us know what is the right thing to do in all that we do. Lord, we ask for favor upon our community. Let God's grace and mercy rest upon it. In your name we pray. Amen.
George for the pledge of allegiance.
We are the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very happy to have our youth council here today, so as we go through this agenda today, we're going to approve our minutes from our previous session, and you'll be seeing some of the other businesses that we'll be handling tonight. Each one of the councilmen has been given copies of the agenda and copies of the minutes prior to the meeting, so they've already read the minutes over. So I'd like to approve at this time, make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Has the motion proper second, that we approve the minutes for August 8th, 2023? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posited by the same sign, ayes have it and it so carried. We have no employee recognition tonight. We have public hearings, and public hearings is where people will come, give an opportunity to express their opinions on a public hearing that's been advertised for a certain zoning area in the city. Our public hearing tonight to receive comments on board and planning and zoning appeals, recommendations to amend the character area map designation assigned to 1374 South Davis Road from professional park development to industrial.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the public hearing was properly advertised. We take any comment at this time. I would note, if you flip over to 6C, you'll see that this item is something you will vote on.
Is there anyone in chamber tonight that want to make any comments on the rezoning of 1374 South Davis Road? Sinon, we consider that public hearing closed. Delegations tonight, we're very happy to have LaGrange Youth Council induction tonight. We're going to ask our representative to come.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am extremely excited for this year's youth council. We have seven different schools represented in this year's youth council with students all across the city of LaGrange, and I think it will easily be our best youth council yet. So the first thing we need to do is get our new students inducted. If the city attorney could please give them their oath, and our new upcoming students, please rise.
If you accept this oath when I'm done, please say I will. Ms. Rachel Wrightman, I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of a youth council member of the city of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection.
I do.
You guys can't now? Too late.
All right, you missed it. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Department of Defense. At the recommendation of the Georgia Municipal Association, we are implementing what we are calling our Code of Civility. And so I'm going to read that, and we will then invite the mayor and city manager Meg Kelsey to come. You guys shake with them. We'll take a picture with Katie Ventura, and then we want all of you all to sign that, recognizing the importance of this code. The LaGrange Youth Council is designed to be a voice for and to reflect the youth of this community. Every type of student is welcome to bring differing ideas, and all people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. As part of the LaGrange Youth Council, I will behave with civility, treating myself and others with respect and consideration. I pledge to show compassion and curiosity when opposing views are brought into discussion. I pledge to be gracious, honest, and open. I pledge to make LaGrange Youth Council a safe haven for everyone who takes part, and I commit to conduct myself at all times with civility and courtesy towards my fellow council. Please, Mayor and city manager Meg Kelsey, if you could please come up, stand right here. I'll just, I'll announce our students as we come in and we get our pictures. Leila Bailey. And then you sign. Oh, you want to do this? Zaven Hart. Deja Johnson. Congratulations. Hardy Johnson. Janay Johnson. Lilly Johnson. Pray to come on. Congratulations. Jiun Kim. Congratulations. Jacob Kite. Congratulations, Jacob. Benjamin Lee. Congratulations. Eric Martinez. Kalisa Lynch. Congratulations. Yashmi Modi. Congratulations. Sakaya Gray. Congratulations.
It just don't work though. We'll come to you. We'll come to you. You don't make too far.
I can't see Aldridge. Congratulations. Jordan Brock. Charlie Key. Alyssa Lee. Alyssa Parker. Madison Petit. Charles E. Reed. Dr. Robinson. Congratulations. Bill Solomon. Congratulations. And Max Zachary. Congratulations.
Thank you. Picture one better than last year.
Thank you, Mayor and Meg, and I want to make a big congratulations to all of our youth council members.
Thank you so very much, Adam. We appreciate everything that you're doing with our youth council. You and Katie just really go out of the way to do a lot for these young people, and we appreciate them. I spoke with them earlier today, and I told them that they're the future mayors, council people, doctors, lawyers, the people that's going to run this city one day, and we appreciate everything that they're doing. Let's give them another hand. We have another delegation tonight, Mr. Nathan Swanson. Is he here in the room? Come up, Mr. Swanson, we appreciate it.
Evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you so much for this time to present our case to you tonight. Getting out of that pews kind of like coming down Vernon Road here lately, it's pretty tight. But tonight, we're going to talk about Youngs Mill Road. I live in Eleanor's Pond on Hammont Road. It's a HOA subdivision, and we came to know about a rezoning request by some very small signs that were put out you couldn't read. You had to stop on a very busy road and take a picture of it and zoom in to find out about it. But what we found out is that the owner of the property is proposing to sell to a contractor out of Atlanta, 88 acres, and looking to build almost 400 units in a very busy area. And when we started looking a little deeper, we found out that that intersection of Hammont Road, Youngs Mill Road, Barnard Road, all come together and have a lot of traffic issues that we are, as citizens, are concerned about. And at your last meeting, when it was proposed on August 8th, there was a traffic proposal or count that was given that was done in the month of June, which there's two months of the year that schools aren't in, June and July. So it doesn't take into any account of June school traffic, and it also, June is a typical month for most families to take vacations. So I feel like that might have also not given us exact numbers on traffic count in that area. Currently in LaGrange and Troup County, there are many developments that have already been approved and under construction, as well as waiting to be brought for approval. And it's our concern that LaGrange and Troup County does not have the infrastructure in place to handle these developments. According to LaGrange's comprehensive plan for local preparedness, it states to identify and put in place the prerequisites for the type of future the community seeks to achieve. And I think we do do a good job on that. We have a lot of things coming to us and a lot of growth, and I'm excited about that. But the prerequisites might include infrastructure, which is roads, water, and sewer, to support or direct new growth. There's a lot of new growth, but do we have that infrastructure in our comprehensive plan built to support it, like we say we're going to do in the comprehensive plan? Ordinances and regulations to manage growth as desired. Leadership and staff capable of responding to opportunities and managing new challenges are undertaking an all-hazard approach to disaster preparedness and response. And so as we look at the infrastructure of utilities, water, sewage power, do we have that in place to handle all this growth? The roads, do we have the maintenance crew and the expansion of the equipment to handle all that growth? Do we have the police, the staff, the vehicles, the budget to handle all that growth? We just had to increase pay just to get a few policemen to come back to the force. Emergency staff, EMS and fire are short-staffed. In fact, on the petition that we presented to you this morning through our, through one of the members, there's some firemen that signed that that live in the area, and they expressed to me that they've been working shorthanded for quite a while now. School capacity facilities, are the facilities available to handle more kids? Are the teachers available to teach? Bus capacity, drivers and equipment? I know we all the time having issues with bus drivers and having the equipment that is maintained to stay on the road and keep our kids safe. So this intersection of Youngs Mill Road, and if you're not familiar with it, Youngs Mill Road travels a long ways. Hammont Road goes all the way to Noonan. Barnard Road comes in and has a lot of apartments, housing, and has a lot of traffic that comes off of Hogansville Road there. And according to the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials' Green Book that LaGrange adopts, and the Georgia DOT official requirements that LaGrange adopts, the stopping sight distance in this area is not very good. The decision sight distance is not very good. The intersection sight distance is not very good. The street lane width, when you go onto Hammont off of Youngs Mill and when you continue down Youngs Mill past Hammont, the street lane width is not in compliance. It's approximately nine feet. I measured it yesterday and took pictures and glad to share that with you. And I'm pretty sure the Georgia DOT requirements are 12 to 15 feet for each lane. Street shoulder width, there's no street shoulders on either one of those roads. The street lateral offsites to obstruction, when you pull up to Youngs Mill Road on Hammont to turn left or right, there's all kinds of obstructions to look either way, not to mention Barnard, when you're approaching from Barnard, that stop sign, you can't see over the hill to the left. There's vertical clearance problems with trees all over Hammont and Youngs Mill Road. There is walking and biking lanes on part of Youngs Mill, but what I have found is that a lot of times you have cars parked there or people walking, and then when you got the big buses coming through, it's very difficult to maneuver, and it's pretty dangerous. And we hadn't even talked about drainage or runoff from this construction and site into our city sewage and water maintenance. So there's a lot of concerns, and one of the four or one of the eight questions that has to be conclusively answered to have a rezoning approved is number four, whether the proposed rezoning will result in a use that will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, including the volume and nature of resulting traffic changes, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. I don't think we've satisfied that question in the rezoning application that was presented for this property and the potential. Currently in this area, there are multiple projects that are being built. We have on North Davis Road, a widening project that's going to go on. I think that was mentioned in the August 8th meeting as well. All that traffic is going to be diverted for, it's probably going to take a year or two, who knows how long, if the DOT is doing, I don't know who's going to do the widening project, but I know if the state involved or federal involved, it's going to take a long time. So that's going to be diverted to these smaller streets that are already not wide enough to handle traffic. There is a property behind Faith Baptist Church that is going to, is already in the works for a new development that enters on North Davis Road across from the 11 houses that were built on North Davis Road, which is very interesting in the 202 block there on North Davis Road, how 11 houses got built in the city limits with septic tanks and not requiring the contractor to bring city sewage to them. That was, I'm interested in planning and zoning, explaining that one to the public. On Commerce, 300 Commerce, there's 185 apartments being built next to Autozone, and including some retail space that's already in motion, dirt's moving. There's 16 acres next to the new Dollar General on Hogansville and Davis Road that's about to become all apartments. Some tenants, business tenants in that building have been evicted so they can start construction. There is four acres on North Barnard, right in the curve, that's up for sale right now with a proposed 33 units to be built on it, as how they're trying to sell four acres there. All this in this two-mile radius is absolutely too much, and the citizens are here tonight, and I think they've called you, emailed you, and put a petition out, and that petition was only signed in two days. It was only two days worth, and we could easily get more. There's at least four areas that have been zoned and started building in this area and have been vacated by the contractor and never fully developed. You have Celebration Boulevard, which actually the landowner, original landowner, Mr. Phillips owned that property as well, and that property is not fully developed. You have North Point Road, just past the city limits on the river, on Hammont Road, that's not fully developed at all. There's a lot of lots out there. You have North Woods Drive, which Barnard turns into when you go around the curve there, and for anybody's historical knowledge, that old white house in the corner is the old Swanson plantation, which is my family. Mill Creek Parkway, over there in front of the Dollar General, has never really developed. It's starting to get some stuff, but that's been sitting there as long as I've been here since 2007, undeveloped, and probably longer than that. So what we would like to come to you as citizens tonight is just ask you to vote no for this rezoning, and I'm not saying that this property can't be done something with, I'm just asking you, hey, we need to look at these issues, these infrastructure issues, and develop them and do what our comprehensive plan says, is to fix those before we start developing. The crime map alone is an F-grade crime all the way up to right where these apartments are proposed to be. So the crime in this area, the foot traffic in this area, you have two convenience stores that are constantly foot traffic and very limited parking right there on Hogansville Road. And I will take any questions, any concerns?
Well, Mr. Swanson, you were allowed this time because you missed the public hearing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And so we just allowed you to come and express your concerns.
Yes, sir.
So the council could hear your concerns. And plus, we've already got some concerns from a former commissioner. He's called today and called pretty sure some of the other councilmen. So your expressions today will be certainly considered.
Thank you.
And so that's what we needed today. But we can't officially make this a public hearing.
No, I understand.
But we could just listen to what you had to say tonight.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you so much.
Thank you for your leniency in tabling this rule and allowing me some moments to talk.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Okay, petitions and communications, board and planning and zoning appeals, recommendations to rezone property located at 433 Gordon Circle from suburban single-family residential to traditional neighborhood medium-density residential.
Mr. Costle, get this report, Mayor.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman. As we discussed this morning during the work session, on August the 14th, our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that roughly one acre of property located at 433 Gordon Circle be rezoned from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood medium-density residential. The action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on September the 12th.
Motion to call for a public hearing?
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion proper second, so carried.
Thank you.
Board and planning and zoning, just stay right there, Mr. Costle. Boarding, planning, and zoning's appeal, recommendations to rezone property located at 200 block of Render Street and East Render Street from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we also discussed this morning during the work session, on August the 14th, our planning commission unanimously recommended that six undeveloped and vacant parcels totaling slightly more than one acre located in the 200 block of Render and East Render Streets be rezoned from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use. The action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on September the 12th.
Motion to call for a public hearing? Second.
Has the motion proper second, we call for a public hearing? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posited by the same sign, ayes have it and it so carried.
Thank you.
Board of Planning and Zoning's appeal, recommendations to amend character area map designation assigned to 1374 South Davis Road from professional park development to industrial.
Yes, sir, this is action, this is ripe for action, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation that we amend the character area map for 1374 South Davis Road.
Have him as a motion proper second, that we amend the character assigned on 1374 South Davis Road. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posited by the same sign, ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. Reports, city manager report?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
No report, no resolutions, no first readings, second readings to rezone property located at 613 Hind Street from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located on Hind Street known by Kenwood Carter to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and affect the date and for a person.
Motion to approve?
Second. Has the motion proper- Has a motion probably second, we approve. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. To rezon property located at 339, 389, and 425 Youngs Mill Road from traditional neighborhood residential to suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood medium-density residential.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this issue until next city council meeting in light of doing a secondary
Traffic study.
...traffic study on Youngs Mill next week so we can have those thoughts that reflect the school being in session.
Okay, has a probably motion and second that we were tabled this item until we've had time to do another traffic study while the school is in. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, and it passes unanimously, it will be tabled. No board and agency appointments. Closing comments.
Yes, sir. The good news for tonight, we'd like to welcome our 2023, 2024 Lagrange Youth Council. Very proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations, we're looking forward to a great year. We'd also like to welcome the Mayor and City Council to come next door to the visitor center for an ice cream social to meet and greet our new future leaders. And also, please be reminded, we start our Leaving the Range Better Than We Found It litter cleanups, they start this Saturday at Community Bank and Trust on West Point Road, eight AM, and everyone is welcome.
Come on down.
Thank you so very much for that wonderful news. We're very happy also to have our chief of police here tonight, G5 Ash.
No, that's not him.
Oh, that's not my man. Sorry.
He ain't clean, though. He ain't clean.
I have these for a reason. All right, but I, but I am happy to have one of our former, one of our former commissioners with us tonight.
He stepped outside.
Mr. Cleveland, thank you so very much for being with us. We appreciate you and all the hard work that you've done over the years. Thank you so very much. With that being said...
You forgot Jimmy McCamey, he was here.
Doctor McCamey was here?
Yeah, you stepped out just for a minute.
Okay, yeah, he was here, Doctor McCamey, he's wonderful. We thank all of you for coming tonight. We appreciate your concern for your community, and the way you make your community good is by showing up and expressing your concerns. Thank each of you. This meeting is now adjourned.